The small grant that we have for for her work dealing with applying for additional grant sources. As you all may recall, we have received a Western Call Grant for $2,500. So we have a small amount of funding that will support the NTC's work effort. And we're just nearing completion of that. It should be ready for signature upon receiving some insurance documents. From NTC, we'll get that contract executed with them shortly. And they'll be off and running. We do anticipate incorporation into the department's budget for fiscal year 23, 24, and added $10,000 under our professional services. That could then be used to amend the contract to increase of the amount going to NTC. So we're hopeful that we can garner some support from the organization and seeing Supervisor Adams here, hopefully from her Supervisory District Office as well, once that reaches the budget setting sessions. That is it. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Much appreciated. And I'm going to go right to Mari, just for her to briefly say that, once it gets going, which will be before the next meeting, we certainly hope, just to tell us extremely briefly what she would then be planning to do. Mari?
Good morning, everybody. Yes, we are going to swing right back to where we were, where we left off. We were at that point going to be approaching the 15 or 17 original signatories that were a part of the Coast Highway Management Plan, and asking for some level of support and going through the grant portal that we use this morning. There are 38 private foundations in California that it seems to make sense we should at least touch base with. So that we can see if they can support the program. So that was vetted with a focus on the environment and proper geography, et cetera. We have not yet heard from the Federal Highway Administration Grant. There was one put in the first funding round to work on a new updated strategic focus. And no one has any idea when they're going to be awarded. But the good news is is that Congress did appropriate an additional $20 million of money to go to doing it. And a second Notice of Funding opportunity. So our sense is that everybody that doesn't get funded in the first round certainly is going to be a prime candidate in the second. So we are right back at it as soon as we are able to work under the contract. Eric Kathleen Nielsen has been incredibly helpful. Thank her please for us and we're, we'll hit the ground running, Martha.
Thank you, Mari. I know you will. And for those of you that haven't been here following, this is to try to begin the organization building that will allow us to more robustly hold the kind of hearings. Well, our meetings that we need to hold to really make sure we are hearing from the community. We have the outreach that we need to do some kind of useful additive work to what stands before us. So thank you very much, Mari and Eric for dealing with the annoying administrative part of it to make us real. We really appreciate that. Hugh Forlito, I see your hand is up as well.
Good morning, Martha. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. I can. Go ahead.
Hugo Forlito with the Big Sur Marathon. I just wanted to take a second to introduce Josh Priester. He's our new Race Director for the Big Sur Marathon and also the Executive Director of the Big Sur Marathon Foundation. I wanted to introduce him to the group.
Thank you, Hugo. Yeah, as Hugo said, my name is Josh Priester, brand new to the area. So I'm happy to be here listening in on the conversation today.
Thank you and welcome. Thank you Hugo for thinking to introduce him. Hope you'll like us. We don't know. We're pretty ordinary. Okay, I don't see any other hands up for non-agenda items. So last call? Anybody? Something popped up then.
Tom Collins had put his name raising his hand in the chat.
Oh. Tom Collins is welcome to speak at this time, although I should tell everyone that I cannot monitor the chat and the meeting. So it's better if you put your hand up or something of that nature. And welcome Matt. And I'd like the record to reflect that Matt Glazer has arrived.
Hey.
I'm asking Colleen and Tom to unmute themselves. I think you should be able to do that now.
There we go.
Hello? Do you have me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Just a quick update on what's happening with the South Coast residents and their access capabilities as we speak now.
Can we wait?
Our only route out.
Can we, can we do that as our main agenda item? We're going to be talking about everything storm related and letting Caltrans talk about where they are. We hope to have a good interactive discussion at that time. Would that be okay?
Okay, of course.
Move into it here because we have another one small thing to do before we get into that. Which is
That's fine, Martha.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Anybody else about something that is not about storm related issues? I don't see anybody. So that being said, I'm going to move this meeting along to the old business item of making findings pursuant to A.
Um, Tom and Colleen, could you mute yourselves? It seems like there's a little bit of resonance coming. And it looks like Martha has frozen. Hopefully she'll rejoin us shortly.
As we know from this particular setting, a lot of us come from a long way away. So there's, there are some benefits to having remote meetings for us. However, as we'll talk about a little bit later at the end of the meeting, we are beginning to look at the logistics of in-person meetings because I believe that may be required as of this spring. So our first thought, Sarah, and I talked about the multi-agency facility. We'll talk about that later on and see if that or timing needs to be adjusted. But I would think we still have to make the findings. Is that correct, Sarah?
Yes, Martha. But before you go there, we did also have the meeting minutes on the agenda.
I can't follow too many things at once.
Backwards to the approval of the minutes from September 7th and October 7th.
Since they're not timed items, I think we can go ahead and actually talk, do our AB 361 and then go back to the minutes. I think that'll work.
Okay. So if I may, Martha, County Council is now making the rounds with all of the county boards committees and commissions regarding the new law that has come into effect. And we were not able to timely get them here for this meeting today. So at the next regular meeting, I think we need to have them come and give a presentation about the new state law that is replacing AB 361. But for today, if we could just go ahead and make the findings and then be able to move forward at the next meeting with a little bit more detailed discussion of what's allowed under the new provisions in state law.
Hey, that sounds doable from my end. Does anybody on the board have any comments about this? Anybody have any comments about this at all? Board, public, anybody? I don't see any hands up. That being the case, can we have a motion to make the findings necessary to allow us to do this if it's still something we can do? Anybody?
Move, Martha.
Thank you, Rick. Executed by, is that Matt?
Yes.
Moved by Rick, executed by Matt. Is there any further discussion? Any discussion from members of the public? Anybody? No. That being the case, I'm going to go ahead and call the roll. Dan Keeg is absent. Matt Glazer?
Yes.
Annalise Agron?
Yes.
Katie Moon?
Yes.
John Alainic?
Yes.
Finn Eifert is absent. Marcus Ortega is absent. Rick Aldinger?
Marcus is here. Yes.
Marcus is here. Welcome, Marcus. Let the record reflect Marcus has joined us. Vote yes. And Rick?
Yes.
My vote yes. So the motion carries. Thank you all. Now we'll go back to the minutes that were presented with the Agenda Packet. Approval of the minutes for both the meeting of September the 7th and the meeting of October the 7th. So I believe we should go directly to John Alainic, who had a correction that I believe needed to be made to the 7th. I'm sorry, I'm a little flustered this morning. John?
Yes, thank you. Actually, just clarification, as I was reviewing the minutes, that was the meeting where we had Luis DeWazo, our project manager, give a brief presentation about the Lime Limekill Creek Bridge Replacement Project. So as written, I showed him the minutes and, you know, we just wanted to give a, I wanted to propose and read into the record just an amendment to what was written. So if it so goes for the board to approve to change the minutes to reflect, Luis DeWazo, Caltrans Project Manager, presented an overview of the Limekill Bridge Replacement Project. Chloride intrusion from coastal fog has led to corrosion of steel in the bridge, leading to concrete's cracking and spalling throughout the structure. Falling concrete is a concern for those accessing the bridge, excuse me, accessing the beach under the bridge. Construction of the project is expected in late 2026 and is expected to take three years to complete. So, and this information is provided for not just what I said, but I wrote it in writing for the record as well.
And that's for the draft October 7th minutes? It's a proposed correction?
Yes.
Thank you. I really appreciate. Shows that you read them. That's kind of nice. Anybody else have additions or corrections to either set of minutes? I'm not seeing any. So is there a motion to prove the minutes is corrected for both September 7th and October 7th? Anybody?
So moved.
Annalisa is moved. Second? Thank you, Katie. Moved by Annalisa, second by Katie Moon. Let me call the roll. Dan Keeg remains absent. Matt Glazer?
I abstain. I was not present.
Annalise Agron?
I was present for October 7th, and so that's a yes.
Okay. I believe you're allowed to vote even if you weren't there, but I don't really remember the ins and outs of that one. Katie Moon?
Yes.
John Alainic?
Yes.
Finn Eifert remains absent. Marcus Ortega?
Yes.
And Rick Aldinger?
I'll abstain, Martha.
Okay, we have a majority of those who are not abstaining. So let's go ahead and call those minutes adopted. Because we don't have any other ones anyway. All right, now we'll get to where we all probably have our heads at this moment, which is a discussion of the ongoing winter storm situation. And we're going to start with a presentation from Caltrans and John has organized some folks to provide that for us, I believe. Is that correct, John?
Yes. And I'll go ahead and kick it off if we're ready.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
So again, first, thank you for everyone being here. And thank you Supervisor Adams for the foresight and the leadership to develop this, this Biway Organization group. You know, a lot of your work got us to where we are today. And this is probably, maybe I'm wrong, but this is probably the largest group we've had in one of our meetings. And obviously it's reflective of, you know, the concern issue happening. But it just shows the potential that this group has to come together and help discuss and collaborate and talk about things on Big Sur Highway 1. So we're glad everyone is here. Obviously, we want to talk about the highway and what's happening from the storm events. But we also want to encourage everyone to stay with us, you know, as we move on, because we have a lot of good things to do. So I, with me, I'll start. I'm going to do a share screen and start a presentation that we have. It's a brief presentation. Has some good pictures, but really the intent is we would like to have a conversation with everyone. We've got key people of our district here and we're ready to talk and we're ready to share what we can. So can everyone see my screen? I'll take that as a yes. And let me start.
Yes, John, it's not full screen. Yeah, there you go.
Oh, there, almost had it. There we go.
Yes.
So with here is with us here today, Sarah Bunchman, our Deputy Director of Maintenance and Traffic. You know, Sarah, I'm of course John Alainic, member of the Big Sur Biway Organization. And also I'm with Industry 5 on the Planning and Engagement Manager, the Outreach Coordinator. And then also another familiar name to you, Kevin Drabinsky. He's here with us too. You've seen Kevin's name on everything that's come out in our communication and we really appreciate that. So today we just want to get through a little bit of an update and share some interesting information. But before even starting, we have to acknowledge and give thanks to our workers that are out there right now. They've been there from the beginning, tirelessly doing what they can to manage the roadway, manage the active changes from these extreme winter storms. Manage and keep everyone safe. That it's our, it's our workers, our maintenance forces. It's our contractors. It's the counties' workers. It's the all local agencies. It's everyone out there doing their best. So I just wanted to pause and just really express that, you know, that level of appreciation because it is due. And it is a job that's very important and we're glad that they're out there and willing to do it. So just a little brief, you know, thought about the bigger picture of our district, District 5. We have things happening in every corner of our district. This is just a few examples of things that are, you know, pretty, pretty extreme. Pretty significant happening on the highway facilities. To our south in Santa Barbara County, Highway 154 is closed. You might have seen that picture on the upper left. That's been in the news pretty frequently. Highway 9 to our north, Santa Cruz County, significant impacts, you know, closures associated with it. Where we are here in San Luis Obispo, Highway 229, again, significant impacts to the road. It's going to take time to deal with all this. I'm just sharing it as, you know, perspective, big picture too, of the things that our forces, our maintenance forces and our contractors, who I mentioned before, are spread around the best we can to get the work done, to address the need. These just came in this morning. I don't even know where they are particularly, but they're within the district. But I just wanted to share for perspective. You know, we, in our, in our District 5, I think I've said this before, we help work with five counties. We have 33 cities that we work with. Within these cities are main streets. There are over 30 main streets, if you will. And it's rained on every one of them. And impacts are very, very significant. And we also have a travel government we work with in this district as well. So we're amongst it all, we're trying to manage the resources and be equitable in how we manage our resources. And, you know, every road is important and we're trying to, with what we have at hand and our, and our forces, be able to make our way around to get the contracts we need going, to get our own people there where they need to be to, to address the need. So just a few more pictures just to show the, the impact and the significance of what everyone is dealing with in this emergency situation that we're, that we're in right now. Meanwhile, back at our office, our district office is in San Luis Obispo. And this is where, where we work, except we haven't been able to. Because our office has seen significant flooding since the last Monday, a week ago from yesterday. This one, one of the main storms hit. This is a flow that went into our building. And since that happened, we've had about two feet of water in our building. Our networks have been shut down. The power's out in the building. And so it's really hindered our ability to, well, we can't access our network drives, you know, that's, that's, that's a big deal from the IT perspective. It's really impacted, you know, this is the facility where our maintenance crews, you know, this is the headquarters, if you will, for our maintenance crews in a lot of ways. So our ability to work in and out of there has been really restricted. So we're dealing with this, you know, even within our own realm as well. But taking it now, more live and local, if you will. These are sites that we want to share and I'll, I'll open it up for Sarah Bunchman to be, you know, happy to discuss any of these. I can, you know, you, you recognize these sites, you know where they are. We have Paul's Live, a few significant big things happening within, you know, within your community. And as you know, there are people out there right now working really hard to address these. Just sharing this as information, we're going to, as we continue on, you know, obviously we'll get to an opportunity for folks to comment and ask questions. And we had the team here to help, you know, cover that. A few more pictures. Things going on, the realities of these storms, extreme storm events happening. And the destruction, you know, is, is pretty significant, the devastation and, and the fact that it's ever changing. And the realities of having to take a very careful and, and safety minded approach to even addressing some of these things so that you, one action doesn't cause additional actions. And you can imagine, you know, living in the community that we're trying to keep the road open the best we can. You, you've lived through things like this before. So that's what we're, we're working on every day since this has all started. More, more pictures to share the reality of things that are going on. And, you know, demonstrating the severity of activities that have slide events, mud, mudfalls, rockfalls, degradation to the road. And you go back to this picture here, you see it's, you know, it's not just what you see on the surface as well. It's a lot of the things that are happening below the riverbed as well. Things that have eroded, drainage systems that have to be significantly repaired, cleared and significantly repaired to be able to function properly again to make things safe. This is a map reflecting just some of the impacted areas. Just use this point to comment about closures. When closures are selected, you know, we, there's a lot of factors that go into that. Obviously, safety is important, the safety of the workers, safety of, you know, people traveling in the area. And, but another important thing to note is they, and this is a, this is a map from yesterday. Another important thing to note is they're carefully reviewed. And as things can be moved and it's determined, we'll do, we'll do that. And when, you know, when, when a closure, north or south or in between can be done, you know, that can be adjusted, we will. Over a course of very, you know, very, very careful review and approach to make sure that it can be done and there's the right turnaround areas. The air, the goal there was just there to point that, well, it can move when it's appropriate to move. And it has already even. And as soon as we know things have moved and it's happened, we let you know. We, we work, we work our hardest to be, have the best kind of communication we can in, in those changes as it's determined to be appropriate. It was a really good question that Chair Deo, Martha, you, you asked us to kind of talk about a little bit. And this is just a few things. We'll certainly be happy to entertain conversation a little more. What can, what can, what can this group help us with? Again, thank you Supervisor Adams. Thank you, Mary, for getting us even together to start with, you know, that some time ago. Because this is the kind of thing, we, we have the mind for the longer term view as well. And being able to address maybe some of the institutional barriers, you know, maybe some of the other concerns that are coming up. Our, our group has the ability to take the, the things documented in our many planning studies, our transportation demand management studies. All of our different things we have that we know have documented the needs and concerns. This group is the mechanism and the ability, can have the ability, and we're just in our infancy. But this group has the ability to help address some of those issues. So what can we do now? Please, as we share information through our social media sites, through our emails, through our press releases. I'm sure you all have equal, you know, equally large groups of folks within your networks. Please click the forward button. Pass it on. Please reply back to us and say, here's a whole group of people who'd like to be added to your distribution list. We are absolutely happy to do that. And really the social media, I'll have a slide in the very end. The social media is the, is the quickest way, obviously, to be connected. As soon as we can, we're going to post things on our sites so that it's available and ready for you to know what's going on and to be informed. Another thought. You know, going forward, you know, we're, we're still dealing with emergency, right? We're dealing, we're dealing with live, active things happening. But going forward, when things settle down and we're able to get in for thorough and more review, there's going to be important assets that are going to have to be repaired, upgraded with long-term solutions. So productive assistance from, from the community, from the, from the members of this committee and from everyone involved is really appreciated. It's going to help us get through the process and get the permitting we need and get the things accomplished we need to accomplish to get the road back open again, get it in safe condition that works for everyone. That's good for the community and it's good for all the motors. So your support when we get to that process will be really appreciated. That's what this group can help us with. The realities of what's happening has taxed us all heavily. And it stretched everyone very thin. With us here, Sarah and Kevin and Kelly McLean and another one of our key people in the emergency response of our maintenance division. They have been going nonstop since this has all started. And so their, their, their time is not their own anymore. You know, that it belongs to this, these storm events in the district. So your patience and understanding during these emergencies, I really appreciate it as well. Like I said, we work, we make every attempt to communicate as we can, when we can. And along the way, we're responding to requests that come in from multiple different areas. And you know, you noted, we've got five counties and 33 cities we're also trying to respond to also have emergencies. So especially during the events that we're in the crisis mode, if you will. You know, if, if there's personal needs and requests that you have, we appreciate when they're kept concise and that gives us the ability to give timely responses. Really now is not the time to have to pause what we're doing and maybe give a very detailed, long research to sort of reply to something when it can wait. We want to reply and we will. But think of it, you know, in, in these moments, we are really doing our best to do with what we can with our resources. And, and what's important too is when even these things we hear about, we have recurring themes. You know, we have little quick hits that come in that are recurring themes. You're going to see it show up in our press release. And we'll be able to share that with everyone so that everyone can hear answers. And then lastly, a note that we, I, we had on there is, you know, you are also our local eyes and ears. So if things are going on that we're not aware of off the highway that you feel might be, have a potential impact to the highway. If there's unauthorized things that are happening, like, like we do, like we have the conversations about the illegal campfires and camping. You know, bringing that up to our forefront puts it all on our radar. So as the local eyes and ears as well, if you see things that are happening, changes to the landscape, develop, if you know that developments are happening. Every, every change in the landscape, every grading plan or I think grading activity happens, has the potential to impact the highway. So it's good for us to share that. And that's the beauty of this forum. And I hope we can continue to share that going forward. Here's, this is the last slide. Just wanted to share this with everyone. If you're here now, take, take a screenshot of this or take your phone and take a snapshot of it. I'll put it back up later. I'll send this to everyone, maybe through, through staff in the chair if we need to. But these are our handles. These are the ways that you can reach us and we can reach you to share our information. The social media is really the fastest way. In, in times past, when activities and emergencies weren't one after the other, we had more time, you know, to take a, kind of maybe a more slower approach and be able to pick up the phone a little more often. Seems like those times in the world of social media and, and electronics, it's hard to do that anymore. But that's not a bad thing because now we have this and this is our way to communicate. So that's just what we want to share some slides. I'm going to stop sharing screen. And offer a chance to, I kind of took the floor here. I was going to offer a chance for Sarah or for Kevin, if you'd like to make any comments and I can slide around any of these slides as needed.
Thank you, John. You did a fabulous job of trying to share some of the challenges that we have along the coast. This was a, a very extreme weather event that didn't stop. Typically, in the past five years, we've had, you know, a weather event that goes on for two or three days, then it lets up, then we're able to open, then we're, you know, we have another weather event. And it starts to bring down debris and rocks or pluck culverts or things, then we close the highway. So we have not done any preemptive closures like we have, we might, but we haven't technically done any preemptive closures where the debris flow areas that we've seen from the fires, the leftover landscape. This year so far, all of our closures have been in response to actual conditions on the highway. So meaning rocks coming down, slides coming down. Some of those pictures that you saw were one location just the other night that came down overnight. That was post mile 18, where it just went all the way across the road. These are the kinds of things that we're trying to avoid having occur when somebody's passing by, right? These are things we take very seriously. This has been an extended event. So I know, Rick, you mentioned that you have new management, but I think I've been here an awfully long time. And I'm very aware of the businesses open. We usually do that on a portable CMS and is typically engaged when we get a contractor in there and more of a long-term closure. So we haven't typically put that up for a short-term weather-related, you know, conditions. But we do know that that's most potentially coming based on some of the damage that we've incurred and we will definitely be taking that into account. I resurrected what we used to put on the sign. So now that you've mentioned it, we're just trying to, we're just getting some sunshine. Quite frankly, as you all know, we moved. uh, we do, we're just getting some sunshine, quite frankly, as you all know, we moved the closure yesterday uh, from just south of Deechens down to Lime Creek, so we could open up another ten miles of the roadway. So we're, our hope that we can provide some signage there. We typically do that when we bring contractors on board. So I, I hear you and uh, we will look into that and um I'm very aware that we do that. So so thank you for bringing that up. And as far as on the south, um, I just wanna go ahead and mention that um, the location known as Polar Star, which is south of Ragged Point. Um, you know, we've been getting lots of questions about, well, can't you just blaze a road through there? Can't you just? I can tell you we cannot. Um, and my past history have been, been here for well over thirty years in my, in my career. Um, uh, there was a location in Santa Barbara, I will say, that we said, oh, we'll just go ahead and clip the bottom of this landslide. It ended up destroying homes. It ended up taking out property. Um, and it was a very expensive uh lawsuit in the end that we ended up paying for. So we're very aware of the liability and the dynamics and that's what we have. We have engineers. I am myself at Geotechnical. Uh, that's where I have been, you know, in my past is I've done a lot of work on landslides and things of this nature. So what I wanna say is I wanna do everything I can to open every road possible. I have no desire to keep it closed. My only desire is to get it open. So, um, I have to do it with all the uh constraints in mind. So, and I wanna mention that um John mentioned the, if you see illegal grading on a site. The slide at the very south end is because some illegal grading occurred on a property that is not ours. This was not a problem area in the past. Last December twenty-seventh, which was twenty twenty-one, actually not twenty twenty-two. Um, we had our first incident dislocation. We've been working with the county and the property owners to try to do corrections on the property. They did illegal grading and it has resulted in this slide. So some of the things that happen are not things that we have control over. We have been in contact, we are working with the contractor now to, um, we went up there yesterday at the first not raining, right? And we will work, but we have to do some drainage correction prior to doing the work on the slide and we will have to do some cutting along that cut slope that's there. So just want you to be aware and I'm happy to take more questions. I think I'll stop there. And Kevin, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Just on the, uh, as John mentioned, if uh when you when you receive our communications, if you uh wanna pass those along to your members or contact me and respond and say, we'd like to add more people to our list. Uh, that's what we're all about. Uh, we, we try to be engaged and give as much information uh in as timely a way as possible. It's been challenging. Um, and we've received some good response from our messaging, but if there's any suggestions on how it might improve. And again, I don't, I don't I, I don't live on a, on a Twitter or or Instagram um um otherwise occupied, but those are great ways of tools that we utilize to get uh messaging out really quick and it's often rebroadcast within a few minutes on uh newspapers and television stations. So it's an effective way for us. And if you uh uh wanna give us a follow, especially on Twitter, um, that's certainly a way to get more instantaneous information. Here to help and open to suggestions.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you, Sarah. Um, so you, you saw some of the pictures, some of those, y- you're the first to see. And so they just literally came in and this, just this morning before this meeting, I was plugging them into the slides for you to share with everyone. So if it pleases the Chair Martha, if you don't mind, maybe I can open it up and happy to facilitate some question and answer with everyone. Uh, Mary Adams has been waiting patiently, so if it's okay, and this is the time, we can go to that.
Um, thank you, and I will just uh resume from you and thank you for your presentation and uh, let us know what we can do to facilitate getting you all on the second floor. Really a good plan. So I appreciate all of the, the sharing we've had from Caltrans. I think everybody's had a chance to understand a little about what they are dealing with right now. Mary Adams, would you ask a question, make a comment or in any way say something?
Thank you. Yeah, I do. I told myself I would just really be quiet today, but seeing the pictures, I just, I cannot not be quiet. And the first thing I wanna say to, is to Sarah and John and Kevin, honestly, seeing your building as it is, just really pierced my heart. I can only imagine all of the upset you've already got and then to have to deal with your own, your own offices just under, in disaster. It is, it's really, my heart just goes to you. I, I really mean it and the work that you've been doing in the face of all of that is heroic. And I needed to, to tell you that. I did wanna ask just one question. Um, I don't wanna get in the weeds, but on slide eight of the deck that you showed, John, is that the worst place that we have? And can you, can you tell me exactly where that one is? The one at the top?
Maybe Kevin or Sarah can help with that.
That's post mile eighteen.
That is mile eighteen?
And is, and is the lower right one, is that Polar Star or no?
That is, the lower right one is Polar Star and the one on the left on the bottom, that is Paul's slide. Which is where the, the gates are on either side of Paul's slide because it is absolutely treacherous and it, we can't afford to have somebody in there when these active weather events are going on and I, I recognize that it's a huge inconvenience and it's doesn't feel good. And I recognize that there's safety concerns and we've already had evacuations and these kinds of things. But this area is exceptionally prone to issues right now. And we've done a lot of work at that location. Our concern, of course, at Paul's slide is it goes well above the road, as most of you know, and it goes all the way to the ocean. And this is one of those areas where in the CHMP, we talk about living with landslides. And we've done a lot of work there. Um, and we will be doing some more work there and we will get it open and passable as soon as we possibly can.
And I know there will be more discussion about it. Mary?
Yeah, and then is the picture at the top, again, would you mind describing that again to me?
It's by Mill Creek and it's by uh post mile eighteen, I believe.
Okay. Okay. And is that the worst? I mean, that looks like the road is taken out there, that it isn't just a slide that the road is taken out.
Um, no, I don't. We, we're having assessments on it right now. Um, I'm not, I, I'm not gonna say it's the worst.
Okay.
I'm not gonna say that. So, um, we have other, I mean, sometimes the picture tells a thousand words and sometimes a picture doesn't, right? If this looks, we may be able to get through here. We have to see there's some retaining walls involved with this one, so we need to see the integrity of the retaining walls. You can kinda see to the right on that top picture, some of the uh crypt wall that's there. So we need to get in there and look at that.
Thank you so much. Thank you just for everything that you're doing.
And thank you, man. Thank you all. Um, I think Rick's hand has been up and we postponed his conversation. Rick, did you wanna reengage?
Yeah, thank you, Martha. Uh, so, um, the, first of all, uh, I certainly wanna commend uh Caltrans uh, in, in a couple areas, um, um, the, the public outreach, the press uh release updates and 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 so forth, I think are in uh incredibly useful, first of all. Uh, but I, 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 it's my sense that Caltrans is doing a, a really effective job of, of getting them out in a timely manner, uh, allowing uh us to a- at least understand kind of what you all are up against. And I know that's substantial right now. Uh, and I know at least a couple uh groups on this call certainly forward those releases out to their, you know, their membership cabs, Big Sur Chamber of Commerce and and then I, I think it does uh flow out from there as well. Uh, and uh, uh, much appreciated. Um, also, secondly, uh, uh, you know, the maintenance crews out on the highway, uh, again, an incredible job. There, you know, they're, they're out there, um, they're on it. I, I see it every day, all day long. And they've done a a wonderful job of keeping as much of the highway open as possible. And, and again, very much appreciated. I know, uh, you know, uh, the highway was closed north between Carmel and the Big Sur uh Valley for a, a few days last week. And uh, a- a- again, uh, uh, crews were out there, uh, assessing, cleaning up and, and that uh opened up uh after just a relatively short closure. Uh, so, uh, you know, back to my original comments and uh, you know, Sarah, yeah, I know that, you know, you and I have spoken about this. Kevin, I'm glad you're on the call. You and I have spoken about this. And, and you know, we have changes in other leadership, uh, you know, different uh, CHP officers, CHP leadership and so on and so forth. And so my uh my concern, uh, a- and uh, one of them i- is I don't wanna bug Kevin every day. Uh, I know he's incredibly busy and uh what, what I'm seeing i- is not matching up with what I hope could happen. I- if, if Caltrans, if it's decided that uh the highway is in good enough condition to open between Carmel and uh the Big Sur Valley. Uh, you know, we, we get the signage up uh electronically right away, uh, that, you know, the highway is closed south of the Big Sur Valley, south of Big Sur and that no detour is available and very appropriate signage without a doubt. And again, historically, we have followed that up with, and Sarah, you mentioned this, uh, a second portable electronic sign that, that follows up on that message with Big Sur businesses are open. Uh, so, uh, in, in that regard, um, it would be my hope that, you know, there's a, at least an understanding. I know uh CHP, you know, might be part of this conversation. Uh, certainly Caltrans, uh, but if, uh, in my mind, if, if the highway is safe to open between Carmel and the Big Sur Valley, and we put the signage up saying it's closed south of that, uh, it would be incredibly helpful if it could just kind of be an automatic thing that, that, that secondary follow-up signage goes into place uh, as soon as physically possible, that Big Sur businesses are, are open. And uh, uh, y- you know, w- we're, we're calling off employees on a daily basis, sending people home. We don't have hours for you. We don't have shifts for you. Uh, we don't have the business to support that. Uh, we want the highway to be safe for people to travel on. There's no question about that. Uh, but, but again, if uh, you know, i- if this is a reasonable measure, if, if uh Caltrans agrees, if, if CHP agrees that when the, the highway is safe enough to be open, that we can have that additional signage to help clarify for the traveling public, uh, what is actually happening on the ground. Um, so there, and that's about the electronic signage. There's also the uh, the, the permanent uh green metal sign that gives the uh, the milestones and the landmarks as you would travel south on Highway One from Carmel. And they, you know, each of those milestones has uh, a uh uh, the ability to say open or closed. Uh, and to me, that's a, again, a very uh graphic visual uh, that would be very helpful for travelers to understand how far can I get. And another indication that you're not gonna be, you're not gonna get to San Luis Obispo or to Santa Barbara, to Los Angeles. Uh, and, and I know CHP, I, I've spoken with them, uh, John Yarres and, and uh, you know, there's frustration there about people not heeding the signs, not reading the signs, not understanding the signs. Uh, and so, uh, you know, part of this is in an effort just to be as clear as we can for, for the traveling public so that uh, you know, they don't uh vent their frustrations uh at us or at the local CHP people, local Caltrans workers on the highway. So that, again, that would be my hope is that it's kind of an automatic thing, so I don't have to to bug Kevin, uh, and that we're, we're providing uh the best, most accurate information we can to travelers.
Thank you, Rick. I think that's very clear and, and would only add that in my interactions with visitors uh, at the Bixby Bridge, many of them are still not clear on what's open and what's closed. Um, I spend a fair amount of time uh helping to explain what that is. So, um, more signage in that respect seems like it might be useful. So thank you, Rick. Um, I also note that uh, I, I, I'm gonna go along with the people who haven't spoken yet and then we'll go back to Caltrans and see, unless there's a direct question, we'll see what they have to add. Gonna go back down to Tom Collins, who we asked to, to postpone his remarks until this section of the meeting. Tom, if you're there, would you like to go ahead?
Yes, um, just to update everyone on, on how the South Coast residents are getting um access to resources outside the area. Um, we're blocked, of course, south and north on Highway One and most recently at Mill Creek. Currently, people are going up those boroughs and Plasticate Ridge Roads to get to South Coast Ridge Road and then out to Nostimeno Ferguson to the north and down to the east to get um provisions. So that's currently what, what's happening. Uh, the, the, these rugged roads are being held open by activities of uh residents, volunteers using their own equipment, gear and backs to keep this area clear. We are working daily, I'm getting daily emails with um Keith uh O'Connor with Pappich. And he has been phenomenal on communicating with us the status of um Nostimeno Ferguson and keeping that road open. Uh, these people are just really phenomenal. Commandos, keeping that rocks are falling down and uh they dodge them and then clear them. Uh, this is our access in and out and uh, we're holding on. Okay. If they could, if Caltrans or anyone could just give us a path through Mill Creek, that would really, really help. But we understand there's other critical priorities out there. But um, I thought I'd just pass that on. Um, other than that, um, there are discussion about um access through uh, cl- areas that are, are closed. Um, having residents, you know, uh, uh, assuming risk and going through these um, a- areas that are closed to the public. I don't know if this is the right place to discuss that, but um, anyway, it, it'll be certainly be something that comes up, um, hopefully in the near future. So that's all I have. And thank all of you for, for what you're doing down there on the highway. We know you're there and we really are very grateful what you're doing. Thank you.
This is a day that we can't forget the work that Caltrans does, isn't it? Thank you for updating us that. I think it's helpful to understand what alternatives exist and don't exist at what cost. So much appreciated. Um, thank you, Tom. Um, and I go back, I saw that Annalise, you had your hand up.
Hi, everyone. Um, thank you for the presentation, John. And it is a difficult time for everyone when uh it was raining cats and dogs the other day and Bree sent her email out asking for access through the gates. I was also thinking about h- how many people are also affected outside of our area and they're trying to deal with that and work for Caltrans. So seeing your office is um that's, that's a serious situation in your ability to work and everything. And thank you to the workers also. Um, the communications update, I have a, I have an idea. Could we possibly include Big Sur Byways organization members in those email updates? Um, currently, members can get on the cabs or the chamber, Big Sur Chamber um, email list to get those updates, but I just thought perhaps we should just include these Big Sur Byway Organization members in that distribution list. So that's one question. Two, the state of emergency that's been announced by both President Biden and Governor Newsom. Uh, is there any way somebody could talk on this call or perhaps in like the assembly member email messages or Congress? or Congressman Panetta's email messages, talk about how small businesses can get relief and how employees could maybe apply for disaster unemployment insurance, insurance? That was some of the pressures that were leading to the question about the gates in Bree's email. And I know people are looking for exceptions and I'm usually most unpopular when I say things like there is a California Streets and Highways code that Caltrans has the responsibility to close the highway if it's unsafe. Even though there's that code, is there any exception possible for residents who wish to take that risk? Could they get access through the gate out? Just putting that on the table. Those gates were also installed for Mud Creek and Paul's Slide and now they're being used more regularly. So residents are wondering if those gates weren't ever there, how would the highway be closed? Because then they'd be able to drive north and south as they used to do before the gates were installed. So are the gates being relied to, relied upon too easily without historical context that residents used to take risks and drive the highway? Okay, so then I'm almost done. Ongoing. Google Maps right now, because of the road closure, it's directing people, if you're trying to get to 101, up and over South Coast Ridge Road to the south through areas that I know there's gates off of the South Coast Ridge Road. Is there anybody who has any communication with Google Maps and can get that corrected and shut down how that algorithm works or however that mapping works? This is what leads to really unsafe conditions for visitors, whether they go at Plaskett or they try to go up Los Burrows and then they get out into this backcountry area that's really muddy right now and crazy. Another question that's going to come up is how the gas situation at the Willow Creek Caltrans location occurred? Was it just simply back-to-back storms and so the resupply wasn't available? Was it Polar Star that shut down the highway and then offset a schedule for resupplying the gas? And the only other thing I'll add on with Rick's signage mention is that the green signs don't have the closed flapping down to Lucia if you're up at Rio Road. So in a, in a, in conjunction with the electrical signs, if we could also have those green signs updated the same time. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Annalise. So that's a lot of meat there. I appreciate it. And I hope Caltrans was taking some notes and we'll get back to them for further discussion once we kind of lay the groundwork of concerns here. Matt Laser, your hand is up.
Thank you so much. Excuse me, I'm a little bit of a tickle in my throat. Annalise actually mentioned several things that I wanted to touch on. Of course, first, major props for Caltrans District Five. Kevin, in particular, your responsiveness to our requests and our collaboration were amazing. And I didn't even realize that you were literally under floodwater as well in your office. Being from New Orleans, I get what that's like. The Google Maps issue, one, kind of one beyond that is the background map of the Caltrans Quick Map is like an old, I don't know how you call it, a topographical, but it shows points on the map that are not well-known to people today. For instance, Post Ranch is called Posts and Esalen is called Slate Hot Springs. So you're going back 60 years to old identifiers. And when you zoom in on those maps, it definitely, for me, who I've only lived here for 16 years, I don't know all of those markers. And so is there a way to get an updated map in the background that's beyond my understanding? And then the other, the other point about the green sign, yes, turn the open and closed. That, I think that's a really great resource. The other thing for Caltrans to consider, and I have no idea if this is even a possibility, this is in the brainstorm space, is a big thick QR code that becomes emblazoned on, on those mile, mile marker signs. Especially at Rio Road, a lot of people take pictures of the sign that says Big Sur 26 miles. If there was a QR code that was embedded in their picture that would then link to Quick Maps or road conditions, I think that would be a really righteous, you know, information to the public because when people take pictures, that's just an idea. And then one other thing is I just want to acknowledge both sides of the conversation of the business being open interest and highway safety and that no doubt Caltrans and the Chamber and CHP and all of the different agencies have a huge balancing act to do. And as a business manager, of course, I want people to know that we're open. But also as a member of the public, it is really disheartening when people are invited into an area where it's really not safe to be. And then I would hope that we, as the Byways organization, can adopt a position that relies on the deference to the Highway Patrol and Caltrans when it comes to the balancing act of how we indicate the signage and indicate access. It's, it's a, it will be an ongoing conversation, I imagine. I look forward to continuing to participate and seeing how, what we've learned here, we can kind of apply to action steps for, for the Big Sur Byways organization in collaboration and in conjunction with Caltrans. That, that's everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Very thoughtful, much appreciated. Megan, I see a hand up from someone named Megan.
Hi, I'm Megan Handy from Treebones on the South Coast, my family's business. And I just want to first take a minute and thank our local Caltrans crew next to us at Willow Springs. They are so hardworking. We see them out there all the time and they've also been locked in with us on the South Coast and are running out of fuel and having to conserve because their diesel hasn't been able to be filled up. So, but I just want to acknowledge them and say how much we appreciate the crew at Willow Springs and everybody else who's, I know, dealing with so many things going on in District Five right now and elsewhere. I also wanted to, am I able to share my screen for a second?
Sarah, can she do that?
I think so. If the shared screen button is available to you below, you should be able to do that.
Okay, I clicked it. Can you guys see my screen?
Not yet.
Okay, one second. Well, I will work on getting that shared, but also wanted to just share that the other night, the National Guard had to respond to an emergency call out on the South Coast because no other emergency services could get in by ambulance or Coast Guard. So it's not just about local access and businesses, but also, you know, these are huge resources that are, and understandably, these were slides that were impassable. So if emergency services could have gotten through a gate or whatever, they would have. But, you know, just to express the, the urgency and the safety issues. So a Black Hawk helicopter landed at Ragged Point to get this person to safety, which is one reason why we were so happy to see, which I wanted to share this picture. Are you guys able to see my screen yet?
Not yet.
Here we go. Ragged Point shared a photo yesterday of a lane cleared at Polar Star and several locals were able to get through safely there. So we were all very hopeful. I know you shared some photos of Polar Star earlier, but this is maybe a more current update, which showed a clear lane. And thankfully, people were able to get through, which also means emergency services would be able to get through and hopefully some local access for resupplies and people to get home. And yeah, all of that. Do you guys have any photos of that lane cleared yesterday? Because the photos you shared didn't reflect that.
Why don't we let you see? You could, trying to think, can we, could you email the photo to?
Yeah.
Somebody or put it in, can you put a photo in the chat? I don't know. I'm, I'm not the right person. But if you could, may, maybe we could share that.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Elena, could you maybe put your email address in the chat so that Megan can?
Okay, I just shared it in the chat. Thanks for that idea. I don't know why it won't let me share my screen.
Maybe somebody can bring that forward for the group. I'm always hopeful.
Working on that right now.
Thank you. Appreciate it, John.
But, you know, the back and forth, I know I also really want to acknowledge the local community members who have reached out and advocated for, for our livelihood and the one, you know, safe road in and out besides the South Coast Ridge Road and back, backroads. I know it's not an ideal time and there's so much going on, but I do think it's important that we all, you know, speak up and advocate and share some local knowledge, which everybody is out and sees and has historical knowledge of the area as well. So I think that that is important and I appreciate the responses we've received from Caltrans even during this difficult time. But that's really it for me for now, but I just wanted to share that updated photo and say that it makes us all very hopeful that possibly even later today or tomorrow, there might be some timed access for local residents only, given, given that there were some people able to get through today or yesterday. So thank you. I'm gonna mute myself again now.
Thank you, Megan. I really appreciate your perspective and I know Caltrans will be anxious to address it, at least in some respect. And I think also in the context of appreciation for the, the accompanied convoys that were allowed for resupply to the north earlier in this emergency, for which many people are extremely grateful that that was a way to have a set time where it was safe enough to bring a group of people out and in again. And that was, that was a great asset to the community, I believe. And maybe a model that can go forward as well elsewhere where appropriate.
We are hopeful possibly for a convoy to the south when it's possible just because for some of us, coming from the north is almost a four-hour, one-way trip to come around from south town when we're oriented to the south. So thank you.
Understood. Thank you, ma'am. Andrea?
Good morning, everyone. I'm Andrea Hamelik. I am the district director for Assembly Member Dawn Ellis. And I would be happier to be with you if it was not under the circumstances. But I just want to echo what Supervisor Adam said about incredible work on everybody's part and how much we appreciate everything that is being done. I just wanted to very quickly mention that I put in the chat some links in response to the question about what is now available with Monterey, San Luis Obispo County being included and Santa Cruz County being included in the, the major disaster declaration. And so if you go on disasterassistance.gov, you will be now able to apply for the federal funds. And I put in the link for the SBA assistance as well. And if you need to file an unemployment claim due to the disaster, that should be now available as well. If you run into any problems with that, I will put in my information in the chat as well. Feel free to reach out and we will make sure to help you navigate through that. So that's it from me. Thank you.
Well, thank you, ma'am, and welcome. And please tell the Assembly member we appreciate the attention. All right, I don't see any more of hands up, so I'd like to go back to the Caltrans.
This is John. I'm sorry, my hand raising thing won't go on, but if I, if it's my turn to speak, I'd like to say a couple of things.
If you would like to speak, John, feel free. This is a good time. We're putting everything on the table so Caltrans can then respond.
Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna try not to repeat anything that's been said in the past, except I would say that Willow Springs Caltrans Station are our next-door neighbors here at Treebones Resort and they're friends of ours and they've done a fabulous job and, and we respect what they have to go through on a daily basis during this. I just, there's a couple of things that have been said that aren't exactly what we've witnessed down here. The first one was that there's no preemptive closures. In my mind, preemptive closure is when there isn't a slide, but you think there will be. The first three weeks of this main event were a lot of closures, foreclosures to be specific, to the south of us when there really wasn't any significant slide. They were slides that cleared within an hour. And I'm not saying there wasn't a pending possibility of additional slides, but that's a preemptive closure. And right now, the highway is a disaster area, but it makes it tougher when the three weeks prior to this big event, we kept closing the highway and blocking everything off. I'm not trying to get guests in. I've closed, we've closed the resort for the last three years now in the winter because the, the road is too unpredictable. So we're closed, but I have 27 families that live at Treebones and I have lots of neighbors who are locked in on both sides and have been for almost a month. And so I, I, I like everyone's friendly comments, but I'm, I gotta be honest, I'm very upset with the fact that when the road could be open, it's not. Polar Slide has a lane completely going through it. It's been cut through as of yesterday. But last night, a Caltrans backhoe was parked right in the middle of the lane to make sure no one used it. And so we gotta get that fixed. You got a lane, come up and bring diesel fuel to Willow Springs. Gorda is gonna be running out of gas fuel today. They need to get supplies through. I've got contractors lined up and suppliers lined up. And to know that they could drive through at a specific time, but they're being blocked, it's hard to take, honestly. It really is. And I drove through Paul's Slide on two occasions and I didn't see the disaster that everyone's talking about. It looked normal to me that, you know, there was some slide work, but it was pretty well-contained. And the slide at Mill Creek honestly seems like it didn't undermine the road and it could be cleared away. So we really have to be, you know, transparent and opening up this road, but to keep us clock locked in, that's extreme measures. And we have to, you know, understand that that's, should be reserved only for amazing emergencies. There's been three emergency events on the South Coast. Two of them ended in helicopter lifts, as Megan said. The last one, they, the, the firefighters waited all day and finally got the Coast Guard to send a Black Hawk helicopter and landed on the highway at night with night vision. That to me.
National Guard.
What did I say?
Coast Guard, not, it was a national.
Right, National Guard. So that's an emergency and, and they landed a helicopter on Gorda Mountain to take a stroke victim to the hospital. And at that particular time, this was a two and a half, three weeks ago, Polar Star was wide open. I drove it. I went around the closure and it wasn't a rock on the road. But emergency vehicles from the south would not go across against a closed sign for legal reasons. And so again, helicopter had to land in a very sketchy place to take someone to save their life. So I feel like we don't have complete transparency. I don't feel like the road needs to be closed tight. I do agree that we don't want visitors on Highway One right now, but for the residents and for the businesses and the people that live here, we need to at least get in and out a couple of times each day and we gotta do that more frequently. In the past, there's been spotters from Caltrans that spot and watch when the road is open. In the past, there's been spotters from Caltrans that spot and watch when the road is open to let people through safely. I think we, I think that could be done, especially to the south of us right now. That's, and then ongoing, I think every, every year, it seems like we argue about why the road has to be closed and where the closure signs are and all of that stuff. The first three closures of Highway One, the slide was twelve miles north of Treebones. But the closure was at Ragged Point, twelve miles south. So twenty-four miles of highway was closed and that didn't take, that didn't respect the businesses and the residents that live in that twenty-four miles. That's Esalen Institute. That's the new Kamaldelee Hermitage. That's Lucia Lodge. That's Treebones Resort. That's Pacific Valley School. That's Gorda. And that's countless enclaves of people that live at Plasket Creek Road, Willow Creek Road, Los Burrows, Gorda Mountain, and all of those places. They basically were blocked out when actually the real slide was north of all of those places and not south. And so every year, we try to find who is the decision maker and who's making these calls. Lately, the new one has been that Caltrans has said it's been CHP. I've called everyone at CHP that I can find and none of them claim responsibility for making the call for closing that road on the south and putting that marker at Ragged Point. So I don't know if CHP is involved, but the truth of the matter is there should be written policies and protocols for the decision-making, plus who to call and talk about it. And that way, it's not an ongoing issue. We agree to the, if we agree to the protocols and the policies, then if it happens, then we can accept it. But like Sarah, when you said there's no preemptive closures, we should probably define what that is, because a preemptive closure is a closure that happens because you think there's something that's bad is about to happen. That's preemptive. And that's what happened prior to now. Now we've got real problems, but they're solvable, but, but three weeks prior, they weren't real, they weren't real closure level issues. That's it for me.
Thank you, John. I really appreciate that perspective. We do have the Public Information Officer from the Highway Patrol, Officer Maduanyo. Would you like to respond at all to the, the situation as a whole and also maybe to Mr. Handy's thoughts about what's going on down there, I mean, more immediately?
Thank you for having me here today. So I just wanna say, first of all, thank you to the public and the residents for understanding and minimizing the travel, especially through these winter storms. The new challenges obviously that we're facing is the movements of the slides, the unknowns of what can possibly continue to happen. And with the road closures that we have in place right now, our current resident post officer, Officer Yuris, he is related to us that yesterday he wrote several citations to tourists that were passing the northern closure that just moved to Lime Creek. So we really wanna try to minimize that as much as possible, but obviously while keeping businesses open and letting travelers understand and letting them know that that area is open, that way we can continue to flow the businesses that are down there as well. But remember, number one, the California Highway Patrol, safety, safety is our number one concern. Obviously, life, property, but we wanna continue to do and provide the best public service that we can. And along with our Caltrans partners, we wanna thank them so much for their hard work and all the movement of the slides. And I know it's gonna be an ongoing, long-term process, but we thank you so much for your patience.
Thank you, ma'am. Much appreciated. And I think at this point, I hope Caltrans folks, the team took notes and John, you and your folks would like to weigh into the meat here?
I'll let Sarah start and I have some notes too.
Okay.
Great. Thank you, Sarah.
Okay. Let's see, we'll start with number one, the green signs. We actually had green signs at the south end of the post as well, but those have been removed. And the reason that the green signs are not being utilized is because we've had a lot of complaints. I mean, it is a huge source of complaints when it's this or that, and people have to go up on ladders to put the, the open and closed in, and that's, you know, I'm not as, I'm concerned for the safety of the workers trying to do that, but honestly, over the years, this, those green signs have seemed to cause more confusion than actual clarification. So we have removed the open and closed. We did use them at the beginning of this year and you know, sheriff's calling like this isn't working, you gotta do this, you know, you, the residents are saying that's not working, this is working. So we have found that it causes more confusion than it actually helps. And so I will say that we're trying to use the electronic signs, right, to try to let people know what is going on. Now, Rick specifically spoke of, you know, business is open, can't we just put that out right away? I actually have federal guidelines that say I'm not allowed to say things like business is open. I actually go around and we, the feds are aware, where we are not allowed to use certain types of words, put certain types of messages on signs. We're very restricted actually in what we are allowed to put on signs. So when I come out there with a contract and provide businesses open, I'm doing it really under a construction, like what would be considered an orange sign. So I have a little bit more latitude. So that was what allows me to actually put some of those messages out there. So I'm always dancing a fine line there between doing things what is called in the, what we call it the MUTCD. So it's a a manual of uniform traffic control devices and I have to adhere to that. So I thought the idea of putting a QR code on the sign was great. But I'm not gonna be allowed to do that unless I get, go through a year or six-month process to try to get a sign like that be approved. As an example, just to, I mean, you may feel like I'm just hiding behind the fact that I have these rules, but I'm really not. There's a specific sign at Highway One, the new roundabout, Highway One and sixty-eight that got put in, that was a, an arrow sign. I have literally been involved in multiple meetings with the federal government. That is an illegal sign. You're not allowed to have that. Why do you have that there? Now, after two or three years, I have special permission to have that one sign and never use it again, right? These kinds of things. So I don't take these lightly, but I have to actually, it's amazing, right? How many rules and regulations we have to to adhere to. And I'll also say that I don't have, I've had to rent those signs in order to get them up there. So don't have like extras sitting around, actually. We have a certain fleet size and so anything that's on wheels, I actually have to account for. I'm only allowed so many pieces of equipment. And if I literally have more signs sitting in the yard that have wheels on them on a trailer, I can't have a truck, right? I can't have other equipment. And that's a true restriction that I have. That is not a it amazes me as a person who's supposed to be a ressort agency, that I have these rules to live within, but that is the reality that I have. So I have to be very careful with my resources and when you're having issues on the coast, it's possible we're having issues other where, you know, elsewhere. So I have to make sure that I have enough resources that cover. So I do rent a sign and bring it out there to say road closed ahead. And we realize that having one at Garapata helps, right? Cause I mean, CHP has often told us, oh, well, you went past three signs. How did you not know that it was closed, right? You know, so it does happen for sure. And you have your hand up, Rick, so I'll stop.
Let me just, let me just weigh in there if I might even before Rick. Sarah, I would like to ask that because we are trying to constitute this no organization and one of the lenses we're looking at is what we could do to help. The restrictions and barriers that you're experiencing internally and managing with appear to me to be things we could help remove. In other words, if there is a rule, it is a rule from either the state or the federal government. We are able to, as an organization separate from Caltrans, to advocate for changes, exceptions and opportunities that might not be available to you within your scope of normal operations. So that when you say you run into these restrictions, it would be very helpful for me if you would share with the group what they are and where they come from and how we might go about loosening them up where necessary or finding a way over through and around. Might not be in your job description, but I believe that that's an opportunity for this organization to step in and be of assistance, which as I said, was my lens for this meeting. Rick?
So I actually had just started, thanks, thanks Martha. I actually just started typing in the chat. Pretty much what you just said, Martha. You know, is there a legislative solution to, to this? Are there, you know, situation-specific waivers that can be, you know, part of the rulemaking and the, the regulations that, that I'm sure the countless regulations that you are up against on many of the, you know, the things that you do. And I just wanted to say, I, I actually had forgotten to, to say this earlier, on the, you know, resource end of it. Sarah, you know, I, I know that, again, Kevin and I have spoken in the past when there simply wasn't a sign available to follow up with the messaging on the, the stationary sign. As of, at least this morning, if not yesterday, there is a second portable electronic messaging sign. I think it's low, if I remember correctly, it's located just south of Point Lobos maybe. With the exact same messaging as the, as the stationary one. And so, you know, in this particular case, if allowed, there, you know, that sign would, could be made available to follow up to the messaging of, of the first sign.
Yeah, it was the one that you're speaking of, I believe, is the one we just put at Garapata and that was at request because we have too many people going past the first one and not seeing it. So we provide a second one with the same message. And it's, it's beca, I mean, I don't know about you, but sometimes you say, oh, what was that sign, right? You, you literally drive past something and I've done it myself, right? And I'm very aware of the highway and orange signs and any sign, right? I'm especially alert and yet I go, oh, what did that say? I didn't see it. So that's honestly why we have a secondary sign and sometimes a third sign. So we, we will work on, as I said, I took that down as an action item to, to see if we can get another portable sign. That'll back that up. I don't wanna take the one away from Garapata for those reasons. So.
Okay, so back, thank you, Sarah. So back to the, the lists.
Sure. We're currently working on Mill Creek. We've, we've pushed some material. The, the one thing that everyone hopefully keeps in mind is that we have experts that look at these slides, look at the behavior, look at what's going on, look at the drainage, look at the water, look at what's above and actually take into account all the different factors and whether something is safe to pass or not. That would be true of Polar Star as well. There may be a lane there. It doesn't mean that it's safe. We currently have a, a pole leaning right on top of the headscarf that has a power line attached to it. We have drainage that is, is uncontrolled and coming down that slope. We tried to punch something through so we can actually get the contractor in there yesterday to start to fix the drainage. It's doesn't, just because you see a lane there does not mean it's safe. People get injured, people get hurt. Our own staff, I remember when Mickey was on the Alder, on the Alder Creek slide, right? And he got hit by a rock and broke his arm, right? I mean, these things are happening. These are not risks that we take lightly. It certainly will try to get, I hopefully, I remember Mud Creek before it went, right? We had, okay, go through, come through, right? We had some caravans. We allowed people through. We're gonna do that as soon as possible. That was pretty sketchy going through there when Mud, before Mud Creek went through, right? It was like, wow, a lot of water. So we do take the risk seriously, but we also recognize that people really do actually need to get through. Our staff included, right? They're, as you said, they are stuck there. And just because it looks good, doesn't mean that it is. A road often has rocks coming down. We have locations where the, you know, boulders come down, we have to blast them, those kinds of things. And when we let people through, Paul's slide may look okay, cause we've gone through with our contractor and tried to clean it up, or our staff has come through and cleaned it up. Right now, Paul's is un, unpassable. The K-rail actually went from the shoulder and has been pushed out by the earth into the middle, right, of the lanes. So we try to keep passage going through there so that we can get crews in there to do some work. But we also have to be cognizant of the real risks that are there and I don't want people to pass through there when we feel it is just unsafe for people to be below these slides or the road underneath. Right? We don't, you can't necessarily always see when there's holes underneath the road, that there's drainage, there's erosion, those kinds of things. We also have cloud culverts and we know that we have some backup of water and we're concerned about it filtrating underneath the embankment. Those kinds of things are all the things that we look at. I know the road looked perfectly clear, say, south of Gorda. I've got thirteen locations right within that zone where I have an emergency response going on. And that may not be apparent to everybody who drives by, but that's why we have experts that are looking at these things and they are up there all the time. So that's one of the things I wanna make sure we keep in mind. And we talked about Paul's and the reason the gates went in at Mud Creek and at Paul's is because it was really unsafe when Mud Creek was going on. We haven't closed those gates to Mud Creek, right? We've only used those gates at Paul's because of the severity and the true ramifications to anybody going through there. We don't go through there. You know, haphazardly. I mean, we're looking, we're spotting for each other, we're going through there, right? If we need to. And we don't go through there when it's actually currently under a severe weather like raining and those kinds of things. It's closed for a reason. So the reason we've had to deploy the gates is because the closures are not being adhered to. And the close, meaning the road closed signs, right? There's a, we're not the only agency recognizing that. I've heard it on the news. I've heard it from the counties. I've heard it from the cities. When we say it's closed, it's closed. It's for your own safety and I don't, I mean, for everyone's safety. So the problem is people aren't listening or reading or don't, that, that, that's for everybody else, not for me. And so people are going through. And sometimes all it takes is one person going through. They may even be a legitimate contractor trying to get in. And how many times have you seen it where people just follow them, right? Oh, well, that person went through. I'm gonna go through too, right? So it creates some liabilities that you as a taxpayer honestly don't want to have taken. So we have to be careful with where we have the road closures and the gates provide that security that, yeah, we really mean this area is too dangerous and we're not sure what's gonna happen in between here during this weather event. So preemptive closures are things where we know we're gonna hit the thresholds for debris flows or we have something that's the National Weather Service has said, you're gonna reach those thresholds, so we're gonna close the road down. We have not closed the road down for those reasons. So our definition is when things are actively going on. And it can be just rocks on the road. And you say, oh, well, that's not a big deal. Well, it is, cause CHP's had to respond to people getting a flat tire. And so they're down there trying to help somebody who has a flat tire because they hit a rock. And then they're not able to respond to other things. And if they get five people that have flat tires or have hit rocks or, you know, done more damage to their vehicle, that creates a hazard. Now I've got more people coming into the road closed section. So that it's not, I see you shaking your head, Megan, and I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just, I don't know. I feel like I feel like there's a little bit of a difference there by blocking. I understand blocking the public out, but there was a gate locked to the south. I don't know if it was at Mud Creek or, or where it was, but I just feel like there's a safety issue in locking us in and telling us that, you know, I feel like as people that live there and that's the only road in and out, we should be able to pass. We should be able to pass at our own risk, at our, you know, take our, at our own risk if there's a lane. And I understand. I understand it being closed to public and businesses, you know, until it's, you know, you guys feel that it's safe to pass, but. As local residents, I don't think that it's fair to lock us in or out when there is a lane to pass through. That's that's what I'm shaking my head to. And and I, you know. Yeah, I just don't think it's safe and especially, yeah, for emergencies and and other things, but I'm a parent to a toddler too. So. Safety, it's not just about life threatening emergencies, but you know, getting out and getting to a pediatrician or restocking, you know, formula. We have an infant on site and stuff too. So. Yeah, I think we're talking about two different things, public access versus local access. And I think in the past, there's been more. Ability for locals to pass through, you know, to infer at their own risk and 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 people are capable of assessing that for themselves as well.
But thank you very much. I just want to just break in here with a time check. John has reminded me that we do have. A hard closure. We lose Caltrans at eleven. So I know that that many of you are scheduled tightly. So. Let's see if we can get as much as possible of an opportunity for Caltrans to respond and us to engage. At least in a way that will allow them to get as much information from us as we possibly can. Hopefully one of the days we'll have more resources to come back and and be able to act upon those. But I'd like to encourage us to go back to Caltrans. John, Sarah, whoever's list is next.
I can give Sarah a breath, you know, let her take a break for a sec. I mean, I took some of the same notes and was hoping to share some of the same things that Sarah did. I think a comment was, I think it was Annalise she brought up about notifications to the byway members. Absolutely, our list of notifications who can put on there is completely open ended. So. We'll go back and, you know, we'll double check who we have on there specifically for our byways members. If there's anyone specifically here that is not getting those. Those emails with the press releases, put your name in the chat now or call us or, you know, you have Kevin's info. He's the one that's, he's the one that's going to put it in anyway. So if you're not on that list, you know, send Kevin a note. He's his name and the contact info has been on there. So. There's certainly no restriction on who we can have on there. We appreciate that. You know, the Sarah was talking a little bit about Polar Star and that, you know, the what the picture you saw, what's been partially. You know, opened, it's, you know, it's, it's, I'm not, I'm coming from the perspective of not the engineer, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm in the planning man, I'm in the planning management side of it, and I'm in the engagement side of it. But I think what I've been hearing is. Everyone is completely aware that, you know, there is the need to get things open and moving as soon as possible. But I, we want to just be honest and say, we're hoping we're conveying clearly that we're not going to do that at the risk of our employees or the the owner of public or the community. I think Sarah was saying there are things that could be happening underneath the road with more erosion, with more water flow that we maybe haven't even determined yet. And, you know, again, I'm coming from this from the, not the engineer perspective, but surely what's, you know, there a slide material is quite likely holding up slide material ready to come down above it. So the thought of someone, you know, kind of going rogue and driving through there is really discouraging because they're putting themselves at risk. And, you know, they're putting even more potential emergency responders at risk if something tragic was to happen. So we just, you know, plead with everyone. I think the High Patrol would agree. We plead with everyone to, you know, mind the closures. And it's not, it has not lost our sight that we are, you know, we are doing our best to get things open when we can. The convoys, we appreciate the positive response to that, the convoys being successful. It as more of those can happening, we're pushing for those to happen as well. Stay tuned for that. So that that's just just a couple of thoughts from, you know, to give Sarah a break to maybe collect a thought or two, but. The notes, you know, notes are being kept. We may not with our last fifteen minutes be able to get through everything. But we are here in the long term, you know, we've, we've been in every one of these meetings that as they've been held. And if they're in person, we're going to be at those as well. And I and I appreciate Martha's point about as as issues arise, that might be something that are more long term perspectives that we can look up to address, like. You know, staffing issues or equipment issues. We're not afraid of having those conversations. We can't get into them now, you know, right now, everything that has a key and four wheels is moving. And so that's, that's all we know. And where small improvements and tweaks along the way can be made, we're glad to take that information today, like. Sarah was willing to investigate further the signs heading southbound in Carmel, but it just stopped raining. So, you know, back to the slide that talked about your patience and understanding. We appreciate that as well.
Yeah. And I'm also going to look into the base maps for Quick Maps. I doubt that's a Caltrans own base map, right? So. The fact that it has old names, I'm kind of curious, but I will definitely bring that up on my traffic side. So I did hear you about that. And as far as. Fuel at the maintenance station, I mean, we're subjected to the same same issues that. You all are quite frankly subjected to. There's things in trying to get the propane tanks and there's challenges there, but we are working. We are just as motivated to help our crews stay there and keep them fueled as. As we are to get you in and out and able to get to the doctors, able to get to the vet, able to get food, fuel. Get, you know, your own propane tanks filled, all of those things. I'm very aware of the challenges there and. We are working, we have been trying to, it's not always us that delays things. We're working with PG&E on that power pole I mentioned, right? We are. Doing what we can. We are also working with the property owner with the drainage and the water and those kinds of things. So we do take. Keeping the road closed extremely seriously. It is not, there is a whole team. It's not. Like I could say, oh, well, we'll open it up at Mill. We can't. I, I, I have information this morning. We're looking at it. We've. Clouded a little road through, but there's definitely safety concerns at that location. They're trying to see, you know, what they. What the final assessment would be, but that's what we're, that's what we're doing at many locations. And that's what we're doing on one fifty-four. It's what we're doing on Route nine. It's what we're doing, right? We have places all over where people are being severely impacted and inconvenienced and. Quite frankly, safety concerns in the Santa Cruz Mountains as well, right? I mean, they have similar concerns. They have two thirty. Thirty-five is close, two thirty-six is close, right? Those kinds of things where they feel trapped. And so. We're trying to get everything open as soon as possible. It's the last thing I want to hear if somebody is trapped. It really is. It's not. It doesn't coincide with my mission to keep these roads open and functional. I'm going to open them even for a convoy if that's what I can do. I could tell you I pushed. And I don't honestly remember the days now, but the other day when we said, well, we'll leave it closed at forty-two. I was like, no, if we can open that ten miles, we're opening it, right? It's like, it was within five minutes. It was like, okay, we'll get the crews. We'll make the turnaround at line, you know, we'll get that going. So. I mean, we push each other. It's like we challenge each other even within Caltrans. It's like, what do we need to do to get that open? What do we need? I don't care if it's five miles, one mile. I'm extremely concerned about the Polar Star one and was immediately. That really is blocking and hampering, at least before you had some outlets both ways. Right now, it's it's awful. And the worst part is it's because some, and that's why there is that comment again, I'm just going to say it about illegal grading. And if you see things going on because that impacted us and it's making our job much harder, right? So that's, that's just something I want you to keep in mind. I know there was like some grading going on. I think it was close to Paul's slide or something, right? Somebody was doing some kind of. Grading at that location, but that wasn't why we have issues at Paul's slide. But I'm just saying, like, there are times that, you know, people bring things up during the meetings that I hear about. So. I want to make sure we only, I know we only have twelve minutes left, so want to make sure. If there was some other topic that I didn't touch upon or something that. Somebody wants to remind me. Those were the things that I think. That I saw.
I see Annalisa's hands up. Annalisa, did you have something?
Not for Sarah, just since I'm talking, I do want to underscore John's point about if we could come up with some sort of protocol. Or some, something to add on as maybe an amendment to the CHMP about closures, then at least we have some text there for future. Reference.
Yeah.
We could put it on the agenda for a future meeting. Yeah.
Sounds like an excellent idea. Thank you, Annalisa. And and thank you, Sarah. And I think. What I would say is, is that that I know the amount of. And I don't want to say fear because I think our people are resilient and strong and brave, but there's worry when you're cut off, especially with you have your back with you. That builds even more than just the worry about whether your job is going to be available or whether it's going to have groceries. There's other things going on there too. And insofar as there can be a mental separation between the needs of residents behind the closures and the general public. I would strongly support that we we look at that and see if there's a way, maybe with the help of the Highway Patrol. To provide an opportunity for those resupplies and those emergencies on some kind of scheduled basis. If that's something that we can do, and I understand the need for the schedule, not only to make sure that the time in question would be safe for people to pass. But also so that the work can be scheduled around it because we don't want to put people who are trying to repair the road at risk from a convoy either. But I strongly would just advocate myself for that. Opportunity to separate the needs of people who are stuck behind the closure from those of the general public. And I know that it's not normally. Clear in the mission of what we do on this highway, but there are times when it seems to me to be appropriate to do that. And this might be a good example of one of them. So just a thought from me and and man, much appreciation for both your your presence and your your openness to this and and the the. Initiation of some ongoing dialogue, both in the short and long term, and we hope that. As this organization builds more resources, we can be more useful in this manner. Sarah, I see your hand is up.
Yes, I had muted Tom and Colleen who were raising their hands. Physically in the video chat because of the sound, but now I'd like to.
All right then.
Hand thing is not available.
Me?
Go ahead.
Sarah, thank you. So thank you for your words. You touch on topics of, you know, safety first. I know it's in everybody's DNA in this group. That's that covers the ninety-nine point nine percent of the public. We're not the ninety-nine percent of the public. We're the point one. We are going to be out on the roads today. We've been out in the roads. Last week, we're going to be, we've been out in the roads on Nausicaä Ferguson for two years. Under the circumstances you're mentioning, they're dangerous. We know they are. We work with you people sometimes side by side. We, this discussion really needs to continue. And deal with the realities. That that are here. We are going to work on these roads this afternoon, and we recognize the dangers. So. Somehow getting access, working that out needs to happen. We have that arrangement built right now. Has been working with the US Forest for two years. We've. The the roads are closed because they're so dangerous. But we're up there. We assure the gates are closed. We have a very limited number of people that come through, residents, not all the big sir, but just certain numbers. So they can access things they must have. The dangers are accepted and understood. And this model's worked without a single incident in the last two years. All with the rocks falling and the trees falling and everything else.
Mudslides.
Mudslides. So we need to find a little opening here where we can communicate and and set up some some kind of protocol that works for everybody.
Maybe a combination lot.
Thank you.
Thanks. I appreciate that thought. And even occurs to me that there may be times that we can send representatives of the group out to resupply if that's all we can do, if everybody can't go. Or something as limited as that, the narrow focus might make it more possible to get some of this done. I really appreciate that.
That is happening now with the convoys.
All right. I'm sorry to say that we're running out of time here. We have so much going on and and there's so much that I learn from every minute, but we only have two minutes, four times, two hours, four times a year. So we got to use it wisely. And I want to thank the team from Caltrans for making the time in their busy schedule to come. I hope that this is the beginning of a conversation, even if we can't do it officially. We certainly have all of our players here who we can speak to one on one. Appreciate Supervisor Adams making the time and Andrea, please tell the Assembly member we appreciate her attention as well. I'm going to need to move on from this with those thanks. Just very briefly for the logistical discussion of of setting the regular quarterly meeting dates. And a brief discussion, which I will kick off by saying. Should we need to meet in person rather than on Zoom at our next meeting, which we may well need to do? We, Sarah and I discussed it and are proposing that we meet at the multi-agency facility if it's available for our first in-person meeting. It seems like. The most appropriate venue for us. I then reached out to John, who is one of our members who comes from away. Haven't had a chance to talk to all the rest of you and assuming that the roads support this. And I think we might ask for special dispensation if the roads do not support this. He has suggested it might be wise for us to start an hour later. Given that we are going to be an in-person, if that in-person meeting were to happen. So. If we adopt our dates for the upcoming year, which are in your agenda. I certainly entertain a conversation about whether they're appropriate and whether the timing is appropriate and anything about venue. And we have just a couple of minutes for that. Anybody have any thoughts, Annalise?
As of right now, the Zoom seems to be really effective, and then it allows more people to join from the South Coast. Also, can we remind everybody that big sir byway organization members cannot speak. Between meetings or we have to create a special. Meeting allowing them to speak. So no work will be done until March for our next agenda.
With the section of of subcommittee kind of stuff, we do have some standing subcommittees that can meet that are fewer than the quorum. Yes, that is exactly true. So we we very much appreciate bringing that point up. I would prefer for us to stay on Zoom now because we have the benefit of the the involvement of some of our. Our state agencies and people from far away. But we may not have that option under the law because we are a Brown Act organization. So we have to comply with the law, whatever it is. We're talking here about making a provision. Should it be necessary to do that? I'm proposing the multi-agency facility. So if anybody has any has any inclination to do so, I would entertain a motion to adopt the regular quarterly meeting schedule as put forward in the agenda. Is there anybody who would be willing to move forward on that or any comment from anybody, member of the public, otherwise, anybody?
Martha, I would make that motion.
Was that Matt?
Yes.
Yes, Sarah?
I just wanted to add that the ability to meet remotely has really been driven by COVID. And the COVID emergency measures that have been in place that have allowed us to meet remotely. Are going away. So that's, that's the issue. However, there are the provisions under the Brown Act that allow. Remote participation so long as you give your location. So maybe there are some creative ways. For members to still participate by Zoom. The challenge that Martha and I talked about is that. There's not great connectivity necessarily for a Zoom. Meeting at, I don't know what the Wi-Fi capacity is at the MAF. So the there's some logistical aspects to that, but we'll just just wanted to add those comments, Martha.
Thank you, Sarah. And Matt, would you, would you entertain the correction that it would be a ten o'clock start rather than a nine o'clock start?
Yes.
Okay, so that the motion, the motion is to adopt the dates with a ten o'clock start instead. Is there a second for that?
Second, Martha, Rick Aldean.
Thank you, Rick. The motion and a second to adopt the regular quarterly meeting schedule as proposed with the change in the start time to ten o'clock. I'm going to go ahead and call the roll. Dan Keig remains absent. Matt Glazer?
Yes.
Annalise Agar?
Yes.
Katie Moon?
Yes.
John Olenek?
Yes.
Finn Eifert remains absent. Marcus Ortega?
Yes.
Rick Aldean?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. So that motion carries and we've adopted that. And as you will see, we will add to the future agenda items if anybody in the group wishes to propose them. And that includes members of the public. Please feel free to email them to me and. And, and Sarah, of course, um, and our administrative support person, uh, in the county, we'll put at, we'll put Taylor's address out there once we get ourselves organized. So that being the case, it's eleven AM and unfortunately we need to close this meeting with thanks to everyone for their participation and a hope that we can move forward and become an organization that can be helpful in helping us all be as resilient as this community can be in the face of these ongoing and predictable emergency situations. So thank you everyone very much for your time and energy and we'll hope that it's helped. And go, go Caltrans. I mean, three cheers for all the work that you're doing. Thank you very much.
We'll go open up as soon as we can. Or at least get a convoy.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Uh, I'm gonna assume that we can get an emotion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved. There's a motion to adjourn and i- is there any objection? Hearing no objection, we're gonna, this meeting adjourned with thanks. Bye, everybody.
Everyone.